They ain't looking so. They ain't looking this way, so it must be good.
I'd like to welcome everyone to Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting. Want to call to all of them. Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, six o'clock P. M. Can we get approval of the agenda?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussions? I do have one amendment. We need to place on the executive session, the bridge settlement located at one fifty-eight Blue Granite Parkway. We got that information, so can we get a motion to?
Make a motion to amend the agenda to include the item on the bridge settlement on the executive session.
Okay. Can we get a second for the amendment? It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Okay, so we have approval of the amendment. Now, going back to the original motion to approve the agenda with the amendments. Can we get a motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show that we've approved the agenda with the amendment and executive session for the bridge settlement. Can we get a motion to approve the minutes? Item four. Okay, excuse me. Anification, Chairman, Councilman Gilbert.
Father, we come before you, giving you thanks for this opportunity to come before you, and thank you for allowing us to assume these positions, Lord God, and serve your people. We ask that you check our hearts over us, Father, as we go forth in doing the things that is better for this county, Lord God. We just ask that you just look down upon us right now and have favor upon that decisions that we make be for the betterment of this county, that we remove all personal agendas, Lord God, and think for the betterment of our county. Thus, we pray in your Son Jesus' name, amen.
We're now down to the approval of the minutes. The regular meeting, ten-ten-twenty-two, and the special call meeting, ten-twenty-six-twenty-two. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. The approval of the minutes. Public presentation, non. Down in the first public comment section, Dr. Roberts.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council. Fairfield County Government welcomes public input during appropriate times at county council meetings. Such input will be allowed in the time, place, and manner determined by the Chair of the County Council as the Presiding Officer. Persons wishing to speak must conduct themselves in the following manner: sign up at the appropriate time to speak; should refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that seeks to disrupt or disturb the meeting; must respect the time limit for the public comments; and must refrain from personal attacks or personal statements about any individual or individuals. Such statements are disruptive because this part of our meeting is not conducive for such exchanges between individuals. As stated, speakers are expected to express themselves within the time, place, and manner previously described. Any violation will result in a warning from the Chair of County Council or the Presiding Officer. Any failure to heed the warning of the Chair or Presiding Officer will result in violating speaker forfeiting their opportunity to finish speaking or to speak during the remainder of the meeting. Council welcomes the comments from members of the public and asks for the cooperation of everyone to allow for the orderly conduct of the people's business. One person signed up to speak, Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway. I have a real problem with moving forward with the evaluation of our administrator. Several issues still remain, and we've done this before. We've gone ahead with things without doing our research, our homework, and having all the documents, and the lack of preparedness has caused us problems. The budget, the last two budgets I can refer to is excellent examples of lack of preparedness, lack of thoughtfulness. But in this particular case, there's two major issues with going ahead with this evaluation. Number one, we haven't even released the results of the Human Resource Survey. The employee survey has not been released. Now, what better measurement of a manager is there than human resources? None. How are you making your people productive? How are you making your people staying on the business? How are you growing them? And the great insights involved with the employee survey offers all this. You can't judge him without knowing those answers. You're shortchanging both the employees and the taxpayers and him without all the information. And in fact, that survey, though, it was only a half-baked survey. We didn't survey the some, I don't know, dozens of employees that left. How can you measure somebody without the right measuring tools? There's nothing more important to any manager, any administrator, than taking care of your employees and understanding your employees. Or maybe council doesn't care what the employees think. Or maybe council doesn't care or think that the employees count. You can't measure him without that. Plus, you can't, speaking of surveys, another survey was buried, as this was, virtually buried, was the citizens' survey. We haven't even gone over that. The survey itself had to be extracted via FOIA, but there's been no discussion on it. So what does, does the citizens not count? Do the employees not count? Does their input not count in any of this as we do these evaluations? Also, are we going to measure progress in the county? How far along are we on the sewer plant? Do we have the permits? Do we have the locations? Do we have approval from the other governments that use the Broad River? Do we have a site? Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
We're down to public hearings, non. Eight ordinance resolution and orders. Third and final reading, orders numbers eight oh-three, and orders to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number five ninety-nine and the related zoning map to provide for the zoning reclassification from Rural Community District to B-two General Business District for four point four acres, parcel described as tax map number zero seven seven dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two three dash zero zero zero, owned by Brian Earl Cock. Can we get a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Chairman Bill, you mind if Mr. Whitaker or Ms. Williams provides some kind of explanation on this property?
Yes, Mr. Whitaker, go ahead. You've got Mrs. Steins in the back, too, if you need to.
Can you hear me now? Okay. All right, so it's a request to consider the amendment to the Fairfield County map for approximately four point four acre parcel zone Rural Community District to B-two General Business District. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed request is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Adopted plans for the area know that Rural Community District is compatible with the Land Management Ordinance five ninety-nine and does not delineate from existing conformities of site current use. Staff recommends approval of the rezon request for approximately four point four acres from Rural Communities District to B-two General Business District. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed request is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Adopted plans for the area know that Rural Community District is compatible with the Land Management Ordinance five ninety-nine and does not delineate from existing conformities of site current use. Staff recommends approval of the rezon request for approximately four point four acres from Rural Communities District to B-two General Business District. The Fairfield County Planning Commission unanimously approved the rezon request as presented on September twenty-second at the Planning Commission hearing. The vote was six-zero. I think Mr. Steins is here if you have any other questions.
Did I satisfy you, Ms. Paulie? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. Five-zero. In favor, item B, first reading, by title only. Orders number eight oh-four, and orders to appropriate one million twenty-seven thousand dollars to the Economic Development Department to use as additional funds for the construction of a speculative building on parcel nine of the Fairfield Commerce Center Tax Map Number one eighty-four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero nine six dash zero 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 for future economic development needs. Derived from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of the Fairfield County property to the Old Castle APG South Incorporated in twenty twenty-one, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order number seven fifty-four as part of the Project Windsor Agreement, and from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of the Fairfield County property to Eau Claire Cooperative Health Center in twenty twenty-two, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order number seven seven five.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved in second since this first reading, by title only. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. Five-zero. Item C, Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, a resolution to approve a variance of the Declaration of the Covenant, Condition, and Restriction for the Fairfield Commerce Center Tax Map Number one eighty-four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero nine six dash zero 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 as parcel nine of the master development plan so that the north wall of the speculative building being constructed by the county on that parcel may be constructed with architectural steel.
Make a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion?
Chairman Bill, you mind if Mr. Whitaker or Ms. Williams provides some kind of explanation on this property?
Yes, Mr. Whitaker, go ahead. You've got Mrs. Steins in the back, too, if you need to.
Can you hear me now? Okay. All right, so it's a request to consider the amendment to the Fairfield County map for approximately four point four acre parcel zone Rural Community District to B-two General Business District. It is the opinion of staff that the proposed request is compliant with the comprehensive plan. Adopted plans for the area know that Rural Community District is compatible with the Land Management Ordinance five ninety-nine and does not delineate from existing conformities of site current use. Staff recommends approval of the rezon request for approximately four point four acres from Rural Communities District to B-two General Business District. The Fairfield County Planning Commission ununanimously approved the rezon request as presented on September twenty-second at the Planning Commission hearing. The vote was six-zero. I think Mr. Steins is here if you have any other questions.
Did I satisfy you, Ms. Paulie? Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. Five-zero. In favor, item B, first reading, by title only. Orders number eight oh-four, and orders to appropriate one million twenty-seven thousand dollars to the Economic Development Department to use as additional funds for the construction of a speculative building on parcel nine of the Fairfield Commerce Center Tax Map Number one eighty-four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero nine six dash zero 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 for future economic development needs. Derived from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of the Fairfield County property to the Old Castle APG South Incorporated in twenty twenty-one, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order number seven fifty-four as part of the Project Windsor Agreement, and from a portion of the proceeds received from the sale of the Fairfield County property to Eau Claire Cooperative Health Center in twenty twenty-two, which was approved by the Fairfield County Council in order number seven seven five.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved in second since this first reading, by title only. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. Five-zero. Item C, Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash zero nine, a resolution to approve a variance of the Declaration of the Covenant, Condition, and Restriction for the Fairfield Commerce Center Tax Map Number one eighty-four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero nine six dash zero 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 as parcel nine of the master development plan so that the north wall of the speculative building being constructed by the county on that parcel may be constructed with architectural steel.
Make a motion to approve the resolution, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, we did talk about that in the economic development, so no discussion. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. Five-zero. Boarding Commission Minutes, for information only. Planning Commission, September twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Disability and Special Needs Board, September twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Boarding Commission Appointments, non. Old Business, non. New Business, non. Mr. Whitaker, County Administrator, report.
Good evening. Our first item is a request for program funding from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund, and we're asking that council approve an application for funding from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund on behalf of Fairfield Behavioral Health Services in partnership with the Fairfield Opioid Response Team. And I'm going to read some about, just to give some context of what this is all about. And Mr. Vernon Kennedy is here as well. He can answer any questions. The South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund was created by South Carolina Opioid Recovery Act to administer and disperse the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund in accordance with the term of the litigation settlement agreement. Money from the South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund will be distributed by the board to help address and remediate the impacts of the opioid epidemic in South Carolina. The South Carolina Opioid Recovery Fund Board is now accepting applications for South Carolina opioid recovery funds. The first deadline to submit applications for funds from the Guaranteed Political Subdivision Fund is December second, and that's why we're coming before council. Fairfield County has received a request for opioid recovery funding from Fairfield Behavioral Health Services in partnership with the Fairfield Opioid Response Team. The request is in the amount of sixty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cent. I think you have the application and the budget in front of you, and the two strategies that they are implementing, requesting implementation or support for implementation, the medication-assisted treatment distribution, and other opioid-related treatment and prevention programs. And of course, Mr. Vernon Kennedy is here if you have any questions.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
My second.
It's been moved in second. Are there any discussions? Any question from Mr. Whitaker or Mr. Kennedy? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posers nay? Let the record show. Five-zero. Mr. Whitaker.
Okay. Our next item is our parcel nine mass grading update. We're going to ask Ms. Broadwater.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
LCI Lineburger began rough grading parcel nine on October the third. They're expected to be substantially complete as of April first, twenty twenty-three. This is a photo taken today. As you can see, they're making progress. Our speculative building is designed to initially be approximately a hundred thousand square feet with the ability to expand to two hundred and fifty thousand square feet in the future. As a cost-saving measure, our engineers and contractor have suggested that the expansion wall be constructed with architectural steel instead of precast concrete panels. Currently, the codes, covenants, and restrictions prohibit any metal siding. The county council may grant a variance when considered necessary. Fairfield County granted this variance to Bo-Mag Americas for their expansion needs. The metal wall will not be seen from the front of the building and will have a shadowline profile. By using a metal wall, the county can save money on material costs and will provide an easier process for expansion for the future user. This is what that would look like. Currently, Fairfield County has no existing industrial buildings available. We have engaged engineers Davis and Floyd and T H S constructors to build an approximately one hundred thousand square foot speculative building in the Fairfield Commerce Center. Because of the fluctuating costs of construction materials, the county has elected to develop our new speculative building using the Construction Manager at Risk, or C M A R, method. Our building contractor must provide the county with a guaranteed maximum price for the project using the C M A R method. The county can avoid change orders and construction costs. As of eleven-ten, twenty twenty-two, we received our G M P for the project, and the total cost for the building will be approximately six million dollars. When we developed our budget in late twenty twenty-one, we expected to be able to build our building for about five million dollars, but due to the rising cost of building materials and the time associated with completing the design, more than that estimated budget is required. Because of that, Fairfield County Economic Development recommends that we allocate the remaining six hundred and ninety-five thousand in proceeds from the sale of the speculative building in Walter B. Brown Industrial Park and three hundred and twenty-two thousand in funds from the sale of Fairfield Memorial Hospital towards the construction of a new speculative building.
Any questions?
Do the council have any questions? It's the, Mr. Paul, it's the property we sold to Eau Claire. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right. Good afternoon. Just wanted to give council and the community an update on the Recreation Economy for Rural Communities Grant that we received. You remember the announcement a few months ago that we received that grant from EPA and other national partners. Well, the steering committee has been meeting to plan the two workshops that will be held, and we're inviting the public to participate in these two workshops. They'll be held December fifth and December sixth. So December fifth will be held here in the Fairfield County Government Complex. It'll start at five-thirty, and the one on December sixth will be held at the Winsboro Old Armory, and that's an all-day event. So Fairfield County was one of twenty-five small and rural communities to receive planning assistance through the Federal Recreation Economy for Rural Communities Program, which is sponsored by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the USDA Forest Service, the Appalachian Regional Commission, and the Northern Border Regional Commission. Through the program, Fairfield County stakeholders will work with a team of consultants and federal and state agency partners to develop an action plan to strengthen our outdoor recreation sector and revitalize our downtown areas. So the workshop will kick off with that public meeting that will be here in this building on December fifth, and it will continue with an all-day work session at the Old Armory on December the sixth. Participants will collaborate to identify a vision, goals, and specific actions to strengthen Fairfield County's recreation economy and revest in the towns of Winsboro, Ridgeway, and Jenkinville. All community members are invited to attend both events. There is a registration. You do not have to register to attend, but it just helps us as we plan for both of those events. The registration link is up on the county's Facebook page. We'll also get it on the county's website as well. You can also contact either myself or Shelley Fintris, the grants coordinator, for more information about those two workshops. It'll be, the first is kind of general information about this grant program, the planning process. The next day will be a lot more like sit-down workshops, technical sessions, but the community is invited to both of those, and from that we'll get an action plan from EPA and those other partners on the ways we can further strengthen our recreation economy here in the county.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Williams? And we're hoping some of the council members can attend.
which provided budgeted funding for a number of listed projects, among them the Ridgway Recreation, Ridgway Community Center, identified with a funding amount allocated to each project, including the Ridgway Community Center project. And I think I have a copy of attachment H, but it was in the settlement agreement. This is attachment H. It was in the settlement agreement. Attachment H to the settlement agreement provided two point five million dollars for the project and stated that the money shall be deposited into an escrow account established by the county, and the use of the funds in escrow should be restricted for the purposes set forth in this attachment. Section four of this resolution, okay, this is the resolution, it's Resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine. It was July the twelfth, July the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and it was done on a six-zero vote. I think Mr. Paulie was the only person who didn't vote, but it was approved six-four. So what I'm going to read you now is a, "Section four of the resolution approving the Dominion Settlement provided that the form, terms, and provision of the agreement that is before this meeting are approved and that all agreement terms and conditions are incorporated in the resolution by reference. The Chair is authorized and directed to execute the agreement as well as final versions of the attachments." And this is one of the attachments, attachment H, okay? "Dare to, in the name of, on behalf of the county, subject to the approval of any revisions or changes, is not material or adverse to the county by the county administrator and council to the county, and clerk of council is hereby authorized and directed to attest the agreement and to deliver the agreement. Section five of that same said resolution approving the Dominion Settlement agreements provides that county council authorizes the Chair, county administrator, and their designees as appropriate following the receipt of advice from legal counsel," which I've always sought advice from legal counsel, "to take such further acts and negotiate, approve, and execute whatever further instruments on behalf of the county is deemed necessary, desirable, or appropriate to affect the intent of this resolution." or appropriate to affect the intent of this resolution. In regard, in that regard, chair and administrator were authorized to perform the ministerial duties relating to fulfilling the county's agreement with Dominion, including execution of agreements relating to the funding of these projects. As the funds were approved by the council in specific amounts for specific projects and settlements of the contested claim, the county was required to execute items approved by the Dominion in good faith. The Fairfield County Procurement Manual was approved by the council in July 14th, 2014, in a one-time vote by motion of a council member. There is no resolution or ordinance presented. The version of the manual currently on the county website and in use indicates that it was, that it was last amended on 8 August the 1st, 2019, but there is no record of council approval. Thus, the August 1st, 2019 manual appears to be a staff document that was never approved by the council, and thus is not binding, binding on the council. Under the equal dignity rule, one reading resolution or motion may be suspend, may be superseded by a one-reading resolution, and a three-reading ordinance may only be superseded by a three-reading ordinance. Thus, the one-reading Dominion Settlement Resolution adopted by council is sufficient authority to override any conflicting versions of the manual adopted by either mo, either, by either one motion of the council or by staff action. Fairfield County initiate, initiated a competitive sealed bidding process, which S.D. Clifton Construction was identified as the lowest responsible bidder and responsible bidder. Following the review, proposed contract by legal counsel, I executed the contract on behalf of the county pursuant to the authority conferred on me as the administrator and Dominion Settlement Resolution. Because of concerns we have had about conflicting and ambiguous provisions of the procurement manual, as well as past issues in the approval process, we initiated a redrafting process a few months ago that is nearing completion for consideration and approval by council. So any questions? And we have our county attorney here.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Where in all of that that you read states that moving forward on this project, that council was not to be abreast of what was going on? I mean, council never saw the plans, uh, there was never a meeting.
Right.
Uh, and since I've been on council, if there was a proj, project of this magnitude, council was, gave the, the chairman and administrator the authority to go forward.
Let me ask you a question. What has been the process, just, just, what has been the process for the other Dominion projects?
Are we talking about this one? Okay.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm just. I'm, I'm not saying the others were done correctly.
Okay, so.
I'm not saying that the others were done correctly. I'm, but I'm, I, this is my concern here. Is that I don't think that steps were properly. I don't see how you can award a bidder a contract and council not know, uh, and not have a say-so in, in it.
Okay.
I just don't see it.
Okay, so.
I mean, if you want to take on the responsibility of, 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 of taking on a project that, that large, and something go wrong, I'm sure that it's going to be on Mr. Whitaker's shoulder and not the council.
Okay, I'll just let my county attorneys speak.
Well, I'll speak in my piece.
Okay.
The only point we would have is that if there are council members who believe that there's some type of conflicting interpretation of the manual versus what the resolution and execution said, that we could perhaps submit it to the Attorney General for an opinion.
We may just do that.
Mr. Bell? A, again, um, a, as people mentioned, um, on the Ridgeway Park and, and Recreation Center, um, we came before council, um, to request additional $400,000 for the, for the Ridgeway, um, Community Center. Okay, that passed by this council.
And I will say, in that briefing document, we stated who the lowest responsible bidder and when.
Yes, we did, and that was the point I was, I, I was going to make. And, um, as we talk about this now, and we have a lot of people here in this audience, but one of the things, we, we are currently in this building today. Um, when we repurposed this building, we came to this building, none of us had seen the plans prior to you being here, Mr. Whitaker.
Yeah, I know.
None of us was on the board when, when those plans came forward.
Oh, man. When do you think this, this work began, Mr. Gilbert?
Mr. Mr. Bell?
I mean, when do you thought this work began?
This building was approved before you and I came on council, was it not?
Mr. Gilbert?
Was it not?
It was not.
It.
Let me explain to you. Let me explain to you.
Mr. Paul, was this approved before?
Mr. Paul is not going to say that. You know why he won't say that? Because it was, it was approved because Mr. Ruth, he's out there in the audience. They made the first approval of the building. The contract was because there were, there were flaws in the contract. What they had to do is, we had to come back in 2019, when you and I were on council, to get the bill and approve. Mr. Paul can tell you, because me, um, myself and him voted against it.
What did you just say? That we approved, we, we.
Right, Mr. Paul, am I right?
But I thought you said that we didn't know anything about it.
Yes, we voted against it.
But I thought you said we didn't know anything about it.
The plan. The plans. We had seen no plans. And, and, and you knew we hadn't seen any plans.
Mr. Bell, Chairman Bell, I will say that when the $400,000 was moved toward the Community Center, I think we were advised by the attorneys involved in the Dominion Settlement to send a letter to Dominion telling them our plans on what we were going to do and move $400,000 to that Recreation Center. I think we were also advised to send Parker Poe a letter as well. Did we do that?
Um, yes, we did. So let me explain that to you and to the audience. Um, Dominion has certain requirements. Prior to us moving money from any project, we have to get their agreement to do so. So what we had to do is write them a letter explaining what we wanted to do and then waiting for their answer. And that's what we did. We have that letter.
Yes, sir, I do.
Um, I don't know whether we have it with us, but yes, we have that letter. Because that is a requirement of all the proj, of all the projects within the Dominion Settlement.
Well, and I think, I think one thing that Mr. Gilbert and other council members might be concerned about is when this project first came about, it was laid out exactly what this community, community center was going to have in it and what was going to be built. I think now with inflation costs and things have changed, council members hadn't been updated on exactly the plans for the building. The Recreation Center Director has only been involved in one meeting, and he's the Director of Recreation, and he's only been involved in one meeting about this Recreation Center, to the point that we're about to build a $3 million gymnasium, and the last I heard, there was going to be no spectator seating in this gym to be able to be used for basketball games. I think he's been, um, not involved in the meetings.
That's what he told you?
I'm just saying that's.
Because i, i, is that what he told you, though?
I'm saying he's been involved in one meeting. And, um, and, and we need to make sure council members are aware of what the plans are now for that Community Center. Um, because i, i, if we're all involved in the building of that Community Center, we would like to be made aware of, of the Community Center.
Um, thank you, and, and what we can do, I, I think, Mr. Whitaker, um, you have offered, um, to show the plans and bring the plans and.
Not a problem at all. Okay. Not a problem at all. We'll put that on the agenda. All right, any more questions about that? All right, next item. Wanted to update you on the, on the, the HR policy and survey process. Um, we are really excited that we are very close to launching our new website, and one of the new items that will be included in the new website is the publication of, of all Freedom of Information Act requests, and we think that is important information for the public sphere. Currently, our county attorney's office is responding to two Freedom of Information Act requests from the media for the Human Resource Functional Audit and the Talent Keepers Talent Watch Report. We will also release, uh, release the reports to council at the same time. Unfortunately, some of the respondents did not follow instructions and name staff members in the free response section of the survey. That's a no-no. And our county attorney is redacting the names so that the information can be shared. But now more important, and, and I want to say that, is not Malik Whitaker's name that's called. And, and I fully expected that, and if you're doing baseline information, that it wouldn't all be perfect. That's the whole point of doing a survey is to learn how current conditions are. So it was no attempt for me, I knew there were going to be things said about me, of course, I knew that. All right, um, but what's more important for the future of this county is what we county staff do with the baseline information, right? You always have to establish baselines. First, the HR audit. We are working on bringing together a team that will act on the excellent recommendations outlined in the report, and we are talking to our vendor to move forward with the development of an employee handbook. This county has never had an employee handbook. It has policy procedure manual, but we're talking about an employee handbook and a new employment, uh, new employment application. And you'll see in the audit, the HR audit, where these were two of the major recommendations that we don't have the capacity to do ourselves. The audit, too, was broken down into several functional areas. Hiring recruitment practice, practices, workplace practices, discrimination and diversity, documentation and record-keeping, compensation and payment practices, health and other benefits, termination practices, and post-employment practices. And of course, last but not least, working environment. And more data on the working environment was the Talent Watch Engagement Survey, the infamous Talent Watch Engagement Survey. The survey was designed to help the administrator understand the following things. So this was a, this was a tool for running the county. Factors that influence employee engagement, factors that influence employees to stay and consider leaving your organization, current employee satisfaction and satisfaction change. And this is a direct quote from the, from the survey in terms of how it was supposed to be used. Your survey results present a rare opportunity to learn exactly how your team members feel about the organization, their jobs, coworkers, and their leader, you. So I knew this was a discussion about leadership, not just across the nine, the 11 months that I've been here, but across the last several years. The information will enable you to improve your ability to engage, retain, and get the best performance for your team. So this is valuable data, um, that was supposed to be designed to be used by leadership, to be used by the county administrator and the team to help improve the county. There are five things that you are supposed to do with these results. Look for surprises. So there's a process of analyzing the information, and the vote, the most valuable outcome is to learn something new. Four steps. Set action planning goals. In, in the body of the, the tool, there's action planning items that help, that, that you can incorporate into your daily practice. So it's a, it's a learning tool. So set action planning goals, meet with leadership. One of the things that's supposed to happen from this survey is I'm supposed to meet with you all to do four things. The factors that influence the current goals, how to set your current goals, and what actions to take to meet your goals. So using the data from the survey to set performance improvement goals in the areas that the survey covered. The third thing is use the guide to conduct the team meeting. So after meeting with county, county council leadership to talk about goals, meet with the department heads to discuss the survey results and think about areas of improvement, and then take action. So it's a four-step process in which these, this tool was supposed to be used, uh, by county leadership to go forth and do something better. Um, so, um, when the county attorney releases that information, I hope that we will, with earnest, in earnest, begin that process of using this information to work to make this county a better place. Any questions?
Any additional questions from council concerning this survey? Thank you, Mr. Whitaker, for, for, for bringing, um, some light to the, um, to the, to the survey and, and its purpose. Do we have any questions?
Okay, that ends my report. Thank you.
Okay, we're down to the, um, clerk, the council report, Non. Second public comment session, Dr. Robbins.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chair. I will read once again the expected decorum statement as I read for the first public comment session. Fairfield County Government welcomes public input during appropriate times at county council meetings. Such input will be allowed in the time, place, and manner determined by the chair of the county council as the presiding officer. Persons wishing to speak must conduct themselves in the following manner. Sign up at the appropriate time to speak, should refrain from engaging in conduct or speech that seeks to disrupt or disturb the meeting, must respect the timeline for the public comments, and must refrain from personal attacks or personal statements about any individual or individuals. Such statements are disruptive because this part of our meeting is not conducive for such exchanges between individuals. As stated, speakers are expected to express themselves within the time, place, and manner previously described. Any violation will result in a warning from the chair of the county council or the presiding officer. Any failure to heed the warning of the chair or presiding officer will result in the violating speaker forfeiting their opportunity to finish speaking or to speak during the remainder of the meeting. Council welcomes the comments from members of the public and asks for the cooperation of everyone to allow for the orderly conduct of the people's business. Four persons signed up to speak. The first person, Norma Branham.
This is a beautiful facility. I am Norma Branham, and this, I didn't come in to tour the building when I had the opportunity, so I'm glad to be here tonight, and y'all look wonderful sitting up there. That's good. I did want to just say that I was instrumental, I hope, in getting responses for your survey. I encouraged employees, especially if they had something to say that may have been negative or some concerns that they had, I encouraged them to fill out the survey. I have problems with some things that have gone on since because we have gotten, I'm going to rattle up a little bit, Mr. Gilbert, thank you for pointing that out, but I'm having problems because I have two employees in my office. One's been there almost three years. One's been there lots more than 30 years. They're not treated equally, and we talked about it last time, that they are essential. Uh, but I feel like the people who maybe have more education than others, who may have more time than others, because with the current bonus and, um, raises that are being proposed, those people are being discriminated against because somebody that worked here one week received a bonus that somebody else that had been here 30 years or three years didn't get. And I wish y'all had taken that into consideration, and it's like Mr. Bright said, I want to be known as an employer who cares about my employees. I'll always fight for them. Whatever that survey said, when I was encouraging my employees to get in there and take that survey, I didn't know that there was a supervisor portion, okay? So I'm not sure that'll be available to me, but, um, I hope that I have been a supervisor that cared about my employees, that tried to treat them as they were so essential, that they were equal regardless of the time that they had spent in the county, and I certainly have not discriminated against my employees, and I wish that y'all could say the same thing. Thank you.
Wanda Bright?
Hi, I'm Wanda Bright. I hope everyone can hear me, and I have two things I wanted to just mention. The first, well, first, thank you for restoring the second public comments session. I really appreciate that.
I really appreciate that. The first is something that I just felt significant the first time I came to a county council meeting in this new facility, and it is the placement of this podium. When I am gonna come up and speak, I'm not speaking just to you. I'm speaking to the people out here and the people, hopefully, on TV watching at home because I'm a resident of the county. And as I speak, I want them to know what I'm speaking about as well as you who make those decisions. So, you know, this is for all of us. I think I would love to see this podium either moved back into a side so that when I see, and we see all of you as well as to look out into the audience, because I care about the people in this community, in our county, that are my neighbors. And when I come here to speak, I hope that I'm speaking not just for myself and my own wants, but also for things that they care about. So that's just something I think it would be more, everyone, it would be more approachable and better communication if this podium were moved over to one side so that we could even have some facial contact out there. That's important to me. I think it's important to some of the other people. Now, the most important thing is that I really would like to request you to consider is to put a hold on your needs, wants, and look more about putting money out for the needs in this county. We have some very, very important needs right now. And one is the improvement of the quality of life and the safety of the people in Fairfield County. And that means the sheriff's department, our first responders, our fire department needs more funds. They do. They need more support and more funding. And of course, the second thing that is so dear to my heart is our animal shelter. If you visit the animal shelter, and I do believe it's come up that all of you have, it is like a dungeon. That needs to, that physical facility needs to be improved, and money needs to be allocated for that. But with that, also for education for how to care for animals. How, just today, I saw an animal had been adopted into a good home, but it came back within six days because the people did not follow the protocol that they had been given for introduction. Thank you.
Jeff Schaefer.
I get tired of repeating myself over and over. Every time I come up here, I tell you folks, I look you right in the eye and I tell you, what are you doing? You live here, your house burns down tonight, two seconds, it's gone. Somebody shoots you, hurts you, hurt your family, there's no police coming, there's no EMS coming, you're dead. Everybody here, we're all in trouble because that tax money is being thrown away. I just heard you, and you correct me if I'm wrong, you want to plan to take $7 million and change, close to it, and build a speculative building to speculate whether something's gonna happen? My vocabulary is still pretty good. Speculate. Well, I'll tell you what to speculate on. How many people are gonna die because we don't have a police force, an EMS force, first responders, fire department? $7 million? $3 million on Ridgeway's recreation that who's gonna go there? We have one in Monticello. There's nobody there. The whole year I drive by, nobody's there. It's not necessary. We need to really sit down and say, what am I gonna spend this money on? I, I, I'm frustrated, but that's nothing new. What bothers me, you know what a PS is? When you're writing a letter, PS? Problems and solutions. You got problems? I never hear a solution. You folks at home, tell them. When they turn the community thing on for YouTube, which would be nice to be doing, if you can manage to do that, nice that you put the second speech on here, but why can't we listen to people when they tell you specifically, this is what's most important? Forget about all this other stuff. We're not gonna speculate a building for millions of dollars to hope somebody comes here, to hire some people? That building will burn down. That building will burn down, and if there's a crime committed, you won't have the police to come because we're not, we're not funding it. We're not funding the important things in life. I got a minute left. I'm sick and tired of telling you people this. Sorry. I'd like to be polite. And last thing I want to say is this. This is still America. We have the right to speak and say what we want to say. When you dictate who I should say it to and when I should say it, that ticks me off. So I'll tell anybody anything. If they don't like it, I'll be outside, you can tell them you didn't like it. Thank you very much for your time. Good night.
Randy Bright.
Apparently, this is the week for evaluations. The voters just gave our council leadership an adamant F for the past year's work, or lack of. Will we learn our lessons? Well, I don't know if we will or not. Because even today, we find out that we're gonna follow, following the form is the most important thing in taking care of the employees. Taking care of the employees, while we did mention you're gonna have meetings down the road with some department heads. Taking care of employees involves personal engagement. Taking care of employees involves listening to employees year-round. We've gone two years. And now we have another election miracle, we're gonna do something about employees, thanks to Clarence and Doug pushing it to the very end. That's a lesson learned. The lesson learned, number one, is listen to your employees. The employees told us they were leaving, the employees left, we never did anything. Listen to the people. The people can continue to say needs before wants. Every meeting, somebody says that. Jeff's said it a thousand times. People write letters to the editors, need before wants. The numbers tell us, 60 openings in the fire department, et cetera, et cetera. And all of this, and we have one of the highest per capita revenue streams in the entire state, but we won't listen to the people. And that's what's got us in this deep hole. That's what's got us in this deep hole as far as not just fire, not just EMS, not just sheriff's department, but so many other things. And now we're bragging about we're gonna move some more money to another want, a recreation department, where we have all these shortages? Thanks for bringing that up. And then also, citizens and the auditors told us our procurement manual screwed up. Malik, in so many words, just said this. This was two years ago, we learned from the citizens and the auditors, the procurement manual screwed up. And we still haven't listened to anybody. We still haven't fixed it. There's too many vague loopholes. There's too many missing gaps. But now, we're finally, another election miracle, gonna be looking at it. And in fact, I, I think that Malik had put that as priority one when he first came on board nine months ago, but we still got a screwed up procurement manual. Listen to the people. We keep falling in these traps because we're not listening to the people. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to congratulate the people elected in the recent, recent election. Be great to have you come on board and for us to work together for the betterment of the county. Thanks.
Okay, if no one else, um... I, I want to say congratulations to all those who also won the election. And also, I want to thank those council members, especially myself and Mr. Trapp, who will be going off this council after, um, and I'm very, very appreciative of, of those persons, and especially in District One that have elected us and his district. We got a lot of things done. We accomplished a lot. And, um, and maybe, um, before I leave this council, I'll tell you about it because it, it was a lot of stuff. And I tell you what, I'm so proud of the record. Oftentimes, you hear those things, and they always give a negative slant. However, we know the word. And Mr. Whitaker, I want to thank you for the, for the job you have done thus far and, and helping this county and put it on a path to grow and prosper. So I want to say that publicly because you have done, and, and my opinion, in this very turbulent time, done a very good job. So again, if there's nothing else, can we get a, we're now down to the executive session? Can we get a motion to go into executive session?
It's a move.
Second, it's been moved and second for executive session. Item A, discussion of personnel evaluation of clerk to council pursuant to South Carolina Code. Item B, discussion of personnel evaluation of county administrator pursuant to South Carolina Code. And also, the Bridge Settlement located on 158 Blue Granite Parkway. Is there anything else? If not, can we, all in favor of executive session? Aye. Opposed, it's nay. Let the record show that we're going into executive session. It is now 6:58.
Yeah, I think we found, um, in the box. However, they have to see this from yet.
Um, Mr. Whitaker, let's do the Bridge Settlement first.
[laughing]
Come on out of the executive session?
Yeah. Okay.
Can we get a motion to come out of the executive session?
I make a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and secondly, we come out of executive session. No action taken in executive session. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the...
Uh, we gotta just come out of executive session first. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else left before council?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the settlement agreement for the Commerce Center Bridge litigation and authorize administrator and chair to execute the agreement on behalf of the county.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Posers nay. Let the record show five zero in favor of the bridge settlement. Thank you. Is anything left before council?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Posers nay. Let the record show five zero. Adjourn. It is now seven fifty-one. I gotta, don't close the thing yet.